I would like to call the order of the meeting of June sixteenth, two thousand and twenty. And I would like to ask Deanne Davis to do the invocation and then I will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance to our flag.
Lord, we ask for your presence and your blessing tonight on our community and on our nation. Be with our leaders and our volunteers as they serve our community. Give them wisdom as they make difficult decisions to keep our citizens safe. Bring peace and unity to our nation. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Can I have a roll call, please?
Becker? Souter?
Here.
McBane?
Here.
Liston?
Here.
D'Attilio?
Here.
Noel?
Here.
Blakeman?
Here.
Billard?
Here.
Hudson?
All right, you all received the meeting minutes from June second. Was there any comments or questions on those? Hearing none, they will stand as submitted. We have two different letters to read this evening, one from Kathleen White regarding music on Main Street. Bear with me while I pull these up on my screen here. Says, "The music that has been playing downtown is awful. There is nothing good to say about it. First, the sound is too loud and the hours are too many. I can at times hear it from my yard, which means you are a bad neighbor interfering with my right to the quiet enjoyment of my property. I can understand special events, but all day, every day?" Question mark. "Second, the music itself is poor quality pseudo-pop songs no one has ever heard before. In general, one's response is, what is this? Over the past couple of years, I have conducted my own poll asking random people what they think of the music. It's creepy." Several people have said this, young people. "We just hurry up and get inside to get away from it and play our own music. Maybe it wouldn't be so bad if they played decent music. I just ignore it. It's disturbing. Music is creepy because it is robotic. You have the weird music playing at all hours at times when no one is around. It's disconnected from reality. It's like some big brother over a loudspeaker telling you, hey, we are, aren't we all happy? Or like a sci-fi movie where the town has been destroyed, but the music, M-U-S-A-K, keeps playing over the empty streets, music on robot autopilot with nothing human about it. I understand the motivation is to make downtown feel livelier, so here comes the idea I got while talking with Ted Souter about this issue. Why not live music, not rock bands, but one person at a time, gentle, intimate, entertaining, and genuine? For example, one guitar player at a time, or one fiddle player, or one accordion player. In other words, buskers like Nashville. Everyone agrees Nashville is a happening place and much of that comes from buskers. And yes, they would have a hat out. You would be supporting local artists, amateur, regular people, even kids. You could have auditions and scheduled with set hours. This would enhance downtown's friendliness and enhance the virtues of our small downtown as a quaint lovely place, not a mall playing Muzak, M-U-S-A-K. It's not all necessary or even desirable that these musicians be professionals, get the word out to the high school and music teachers. Sincerely, Kathleen White, South Elm Street." And then we secondly received letter from Sherry Fry regarding music on Main Street. And find it. Take me one second. "To counsel, I would like to say that I am opposed to the piped-in music that is playing uptown at all hours of the day and evening. It is distracting and hard to listen to when walking through town. I like the bird song and church chimes much better and do not see a need for the music over loudspeakers. It would be okay during special events. I realize the city has put a lot of money and time in installing the speakers, but I think they could be put to better use somehow. It just seems senseless and seems robotic to be forced to listen to it on the streets. Thank you for your consideration on this matter. Sincerely, Columbiana resident, Sherry Fry." So we received those two letters. You received reports from the planning commission meeting minutes of June ninth. Any comments or questions on any of those? All right, we have no one desiring to appear this evening, so we'll move right into the manager's report.
Hey, thanks, Brian. So we worked on the CDBG grant for South Vine Street. We've been working with the county on that. The EMS, I'd like to thank the EMS and the police chief for coming out and giving a training session to all our pool staff. I want to thank all the park staff, including, you know, Terry and Tim and Frank for everything they did this last three weeks to get that pool ready. Really appreciate it. And we had our opening yesterday. Pre-registration went pretty well. There was about seventy that pre-registered. And it was a light day yesterday at the pool, but we were really trying to, you know, this is kind of a soft opening until the weekend. So we're getting some experience Monday through Friday, and then we'll see what happens on Saturday, but it went really well. The governor said last week that we could open the playgrounds. Actually, it's two weeks ago now. And I want to thank the park staff for following up on that. They found the guidance with the help of the health department. And we actually opened up the tot lots and the playgrounds today. And, you know, we're continuing to work on other things. You know, we're still, we still need to consider in the future the pavilions and the restrooms, but for right now, those are going to remain closed. We did put a couple of press releases out last couple of days about this, and those are online. Continue to watch the governor's orders. We're expecting something maybe, you know, at the end of June that'll kind of direct us what July is going to look like. We've been working on our OEMA grant application for FEMA for the priority number two. We're working on that and, you know, just conversing back and forth. We're, it's almost completely finished and it'll be submitted to the federal FEMA in probably, probably in early July. We did put out the requests for proposals for the East Park Avenue Springfield Road and Heck Road project. And we're going to be narrowing down that, and then I'll bring you a contract hopefully that we can enter into for that at probably the next meeting. If you've been out to the ODOT Phase One Safety Project, the gutters, they're looking great. We did some some black topping this last week, which really made it really look nice. And again, we're doing it in five, five hundred-foot sections. The first section's about done. We're going to put some catch basins in there in the next couple of weeks. And then on the third, the last section, we are putting in, we're pouring curbs this week. And then we're also going to be pouring sidewalks very soon. If you've taken a walk down near Pavilion Number Three, you may have seen the test port for the sidewalks, which are going to be brown, and that was Terra Designs and the R and B's idea. And that's where we kind of merged those projects together, where they're going to be working on the great lawn and the legacy loop. And that's going to be brown-colored concrete. This, we're going to use the same exact recipe, if you will, and we'll be able to, you know, just, it'll be a very smooth transition. We did hang up the flower baskets. The water, automatic watering system is not quite ready. I guess there were some parts that the company needed, but we're ready on our end, so any day now, they'll be automatically watered. Street Department has been helping out the ODOT project a lot. Jesse's been, you know, kind of managing that project, so we really appreciate that. Been a little shorthanded out the water plant. We did have a couple motor service pumps that were giving us problems. And I think we're about have those figured out. Let's see, we sent a couple pumps out for repair for wastewater department and the autoclave in the lab, which I believe is about eighteen years old. We had to, we're going to have to replace that. We sent out two motors for service. Park and Cemetery, they've been really super busy. Again, they're, the park is looking great. And just keeping up with all the new guidelines on how to do this has been keeping us hopping. They ordered a lot of signs. There's a lot of signs in the park about the COVID nineteen and how to get through that. They helped on the opening the pool. The park staff installed a pump for the water slide. And since the last meeting, we finished up repairing the steps. And thanks to Jeff Stoy for doing that work for us. And he did that work for us for free. So once again, people are stepping up and giving back. That electric department, that great big project that we've got going on, they came out, drained the oil out of the transformer, reduced the weight considerably. There were three thousand gallons of oil in there. And the rented transformer, if it's not here, it will be, and we'll be putting that in this week. We do plan to participate in the energy savings days again. Remember last year, we asked all the residents and industrial customers to save money by, basically, they're going to save transmission costs this year. That was, that was last year, and we saved about a hundred thousand dollars of transmission costs for this year. So we'd like to do that again, and we're going to start paying attention to AMP. They're going to let us know when those energy saving days are just automatically, the businesses are already, you know, working on that, and hopefully the residents follow suit. And we could have one Friday, but it's doubtful. Last thing I had, and maybe we want to talk about a little bit more, but was the Zoom meetings, the idea of Zoom meetings. We have had Amber make out links for the next, for, through August, so that we would have one meeting in July and one meeting in August. And maybe we want to have a conversation with that now or later, doesn't matter, to kind of formalize that. And, you know, I think it'll be good for several things. We do have some medical things coming up for a couple of you. And that'll be handy to be able to do Zoom, and why not take advantage of it? And it's, and it's working really well, and thanks to Amber for helping us out on that. That's all I had, Brian.
Very good. You all received the, you guys have any comments or questions for Lance?
I was just going to comment that I do like the idea of continuing the Zoom meetings through at least the end of August, I think. That we aren't having any issues with them. It seems to be very successful, and it really doesn't make any sense. I mean, we all know COVID's still out there, and we know not only there are members of council who might be medically have issues, but there are also members of the, you know, public who would want to come to the meetings who might also have issues. So keeping, keeping it in Zoom for a couple more months, I don't think really hurt anything. And the only issue I've, question I've had would be if we needed an executive session, how that would work. But that hasn't come up, so I don't, I don't really think it's something we need to worry about right now.
I agree with Dan on this, too. I think that going through at least the end of August makes sense. And I would assume that if we had an executive session, it'd be possible to turn off everybody else's ability to hear the meeting and then bring them back in after the executive session was over, but, you know, that's, we'll have to check that and find out.
Probably just have a separate link that's only, that's a private link.
It's a separate room. School board's done. It works pretty well because we've gone into executive session.
Amber's saying she can do a breakout room for us.
Yeah, she could do it, I'm sure. And my vote is definitely for Zoom meetings, so I'm here tonight, so they've worked for me.
A quick question. Something maybe we need to talk about. If the governor would say that we could go to twenty-five people in a room, you know, right now it's ten, I believe, if I'm not correct. Maybe if we went to twenty-five in a room, we might want to consider having public meetings if that happened. I'm just curious with other people's opinions. I'm not against having these meetings through August. That's not what I'm saying. But would that be some sort of criteria we would use to go to more public meetings after August?
So, well, I mean, I think what's, what may happen next week or the week after, I mean, he, the governor may, may open it up to more than ten people, even in July and August, but, you know, I think it would, I think it would make sense to stay the course, you know, throughout the, throughout the summer, but that, that's up to you.
Well, I concur with that, but I just mean.
Guys, we need to stop. I don't want to interrupt you, but we have a scheduled public hearing for the tax hearing at seven fifteen. It's seven fifteen, so I, we can go back to this, but I need to ask for a motion to go into a public hearing regarding the tax budget for two thousand and twenty-one.
So moved.
Second.
Have a roll call, please.
Souter?
Yes.
McBane?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
D'Attilio?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
All right, is there anyone from the public wishing to address council this evening in regards to the proposed tax budget for two thousand and twenty-one? If so, just remove the mute from your login. Doesn't look like there's anybody wishing to make a comment, so I need a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved. So moved.
Second.
Have a roll call.
McBane?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Attilio?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
All right, we can go back to your discussion now, Rick. I didn't mean to interrupt you, but I didn't know.
I was just really speaking September on, if that would be criteria we could utilize to make our decision to go back to the, to council chambers. If the governor opens up to twenty-five or more.
I would think it would make sense to.
Well, I'd really like to back in council chambers. I just think that's the way it ought to operate. I understand the situation here, and I'm good July and August, or follow the governor's recommendations.
I agree with Ted. I like the council chambers. Yeah, through December's fine. That gets us through, hopefully through any kind of funny period, but if we're not settled down by then, we got a bigger issue.
Sounds like a decent consensus. I would think it's something that we could revisit in the August meeting, too, because at that point, we'll have direction and have a better layer of the land of what's, what it's looking like.
Yes.
Good idea.
So we can revisit it then. You all received the bill list for June sixteenth. Any comments or questions on it? Hearing none, we'll move into old and new business. Due to the length of the ordinances, can I have a motion to read them by title only, as well as reading B and C under new business as an emergency?
So moved.
Second.
Have a roll call.
I have a question on the ordinance twenty oh three oh four three. Why does that need to be an emergency?
So the mayor's court clerk resigned over a month ago.
Okay.
And so we currently have no clerk. And in the past, the dispatchers within the police department filled that position. It's kind of the purview of the mayor who would fill that position. And there's never been anything spelled out anywhere as to what that position entails, whether it's part-time, full-time, pay, any of the above. So we can't move forward filling that spot until we have this. And because we only have one meeting in July, we, if we don't do something as an emergency, there'll be two more mayor's courts, the first and third Tuesdays in July with no clerk. And we're already a month behind in filing the paperwork with the Supreme Court for the state of Ohio for the month of May, because we didn't have a clerk then.
Sounds like an emergency.
It is.
So defined.
Yeah, I think it's the truest definition of why we need to do something.
Yeah.
Yeah. Can I have a roll call, Deanne?
I guess we'll skip Liston for a minute. D'Attilio?
He's here.
Noel?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
McBane?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Okay. Ordinance number twenty dash oh dash three zero four zero, second reading, an ordinance approving the transfer of certain tracts of land within Firestone Park to the Columbian Exempt Village School District.
So moved. Second.
Any comments?
So my question real quick would be, once we do this, it's a done deal, or does the school still have to do something on their side?
I think the school will vote at their next school board meeting, which would be next week, right, Mark?
The school will vote next week, providing, and since I've been a little bit out of touch, I don't know if the Firestone Foundation has technically approved it, because we had to have it in final form, then they wanted to look at it. You know, Ron didn't think that was going to be any problem. His contact was on board with it. And basically, as you saw, the language is parroting what's in the original deeds, so there shouldn't be any reason anybody ought to have any objection. So right now, I think it is on school board's schedule.
Any other comments? Have a roll call.
D'Attilio?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
McBane?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Ordinance number twenty dash oh dash three zero four one, second reading, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Lyden Oil Company, three seven eleven Lee Harps Road, Youngstown, Ohio, four four five one five, for the purchase of gasoline and diesel fuel.
So moved. Second.
Any comments? Have a roll call, please.
Noel?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
McBane?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Attilio?
Yeah.
Ordinance number twenty dash oh dash three zero four two, second reading, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Carmuse Lime Incorporated, eleven Stanwick Street, first floor, Pittsburgh, PA, fifteen two two two, for the purchase of lime for the.
So moved. Second. Second.
Have a roll call, please.
Souter?
Yes.
McBane?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Attilio?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Resolution number twenty dash R dash five five three, second reading, a resolution to exclude the approval of the city of Salem, which approval would otherwise be required for an alternate method of apportionment of local government fund monies to be distributed in two thousand and twenty-one.
So moved. Second.
Any comments? Have a roll call.
McBane?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
D'Attilio?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
Resolution number twenty dash R dash five five four, second reading, a resolution approving a new alternative method of apportionment of local government fund monies to be distributed in two thousand and twenty-one.
So moved. Second.
Any comments? Have a roll call.
Liston?
Yes.
D'Attilio?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
McBane?
Yes.
Need a motion to approve the tax budget for two thousand and twenty-one.
So moved. Second.
Any comments on this? Have a roll call, please.
D'Attilio? You're muted.
Yeah, yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
McBane?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Resolution number twenty dash R dash five five five, emergency. An authorization the city manager to enter into a partnership agreement with the Ohio Development Services Agency, Office of Community Development, to participate in the Community Housing Impact and Preservation Program, CHIP, for the city of Columbiana.
So moved. So moved. Seconded. Seconded.
Any comments? Have a roll call, please.
Noel?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
McBane?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
D'Attilio?
Yes.
Ordinance number twenty dash oh dash three zero four three, emergency, an emergency ordinance amending section one of ordinance number fourteen dash oh dash two seven nine zero. An ordinance setting salaries and establishing positions and other conditions of employment for certain appointed personnel of the city of Columbiana.
So moved. Second.
Any comments? Have a roll call.
Souter?
Yes.
McBane?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
D'Attilio?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
At this time, if there's anyone from the public that wishes to address council, now would be the time to unmute yourself and speak freely with council. Hearing none, we'll go into council comments.
I'll just give you a little update on the music letters. She came down to me. We had a lively discussion. I asked her if she thought it was the middle of the road, and I think maybe that's where she come up with her idea of live music. But, and that was the gist of the discussion.
Yeah, I mean, I, you're never going to make everybody happy, but I think not only does the music do good downtown, I think it does lift people's spirits, and I think it does make a more positive commercial setting. I think it does make people want to spend more time down there, and I just think it lends a good feel to downtown. But again, like everything else that we've talked about in the past, you're never going to make everyone happy, especially with. But again, like everything else that we've talked about in the past, you're never gonna make everyone happy, especially with choice of music styles.
For, for all those things, I'm sorry, go ahead, Skip, go ahead.
I was just gonna say Lance has already made some adjustments, which I think are probably leaning toward what they, a little bit more what they might want. And I mean, I love the music. I like, I like to be down there. I like to listen to it, so.
I agree with Skip, and I would just like to add that I, I think Lance has tried to deal with some issues with other people in the community. And I really'd like to see him, you know, try to adjust things if we feel we can make it better. And let him try to carry on with this. But I also wholeheartedly believe that the music is a good thing for downtown.
Yeah, and what Skip was referring to, I did do, I'm playing eighties, nineties and two thousands greatest hits. So they should be recognizable. I also reduced the hours just a little bit to make sure that, you know, we weren't getting too late in the evening. And on Sunday, you know, we're, we're like from one to eight. So, you know, we want to make sure that we're not interrupting church.
Mark, I would just say whatever's going on, I hope you're okay. Glad you, oh, you're muted.
You're muted, Mark.
You're, you're muted. There you go.
I'm now unmuted. Um, I've had some, we'll call them minor health issues. I very quickly tried to kind of hide my surroundings so that you wouldn't guess where is he. So I'm in some room, sitting in an off-white chair.
Your bracelet gave it away.
Hospital bracelet gave you away.
Your bracelet gave it away.
How about this?
Leave it to a defense attorney to miss that detail.
I almost didn't even put audio on. I thought, I look for myself, I look the best I've looked in a week.
Well, we hope you're okay.
Yeah, get better, buddy.
I, I do want to thank Mark. I mean, he's been a trooper. He may have had that wristband on, but that didn't stop me from bugging him. So, you know, I, I appreciate it. And, you know, he's, he's been, he's been great.
Well, I appreciate it. And honestly, I'm tired of daytime TV. Nighttime TV reruns. I was in an area of where I am that was creepy enough. The lights are on twenty-four seven, and there's beeps and buzzes. And I decided to watch Star Wars movies. So needless to say, that added to the effect of where I am. So I'll pass that.
Hey, if nothing else, it shows work ethic.
I've, I've tried to talk with the office, you know, ignored. It, it's, it has been nice to be able to ignore things because that's what I've had to do. But I have tried to make sure that I kept up with Lance on things, so.
Good.
Yeah.
Anyone else have any council comments?
I want to take a moment to recognize a couple of Columbiana youth, actually. First would be Elizabeth Sambita, who you might all remember as Crystal's daughter. She was recently selected as a national delegate for the Girl Scouts of the USA. So I wanted to recognize her. And then second would be Dalton Rothwell, who's a resident Columbiana, twenty twenty graduate of Columbiana High. I'm sorry, not Columbiana. He went to Crestview. Sorry about that. He's a twenty twenty graduate Crestview High School and a, a member of troop twenty-two, the Boy Scouts out of New Waterford. He was recently, recently completed his border review for Eagle Scout. And we're just waiting for his paperwork to get back. And he'll officially be an Eagle Scout. So I wanted to recognize those two young people. Obviously, I know them both very well. They are both, you know, both represent their city, their schools, their leaders, and most especially their families. And just, they're delightful young people. So I wanted to recognize them tonight.
Anyone else?
I just wanted to give a quick shout out to all the city employees. They've been doing a great job through this COVID-19. And it's a great team. And I know the chief's on, and I see Tim's on from the park. I'm not sure exactly who's all there, but, and Mike Harold, Finance Director for, you know, it, you know, any given springs, you know, busy. And with this, all these, all these things happening, Mike's been, Mike's been great, and Chief's been great. And everybody's worked together. So it, it, it makes you proud to, you know, work, work for the city.
Any other comments?
Great to see the pool open. I think that's fantastic. And a real credit to everybody that was involved making that happen.
It's been good seeing everybody. Am I muted? Nope, I'm not. No, but I'm going to have to leave the meeting, so.
Understood.
See you in a couple of weeks.
See you later. Actually, we've got a month now, Mark.
Yeah, I know.
See you later.
Take care, Mark.
Bye.
Thanks. Bye.
All right. Any other comments? I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Well, that should show everyone the kind of dedication we have from everybody involved in the city.
It's, it's been an amazing job. I'm, I'm just, with every other pool being closed and just holding out and figuring it out. It was just, it was great.
Yep. Well, very good. Well, I'm sure we'll all talk before the next meeting in July. But for some reason, we don't stay safe. And we'll, we'll talk soon.
When is the next meeting?
It will be the third Tuesday in July.
Okay.
And then there's one third Tuesday in August.
Okay.
The summer slows down a little bit.
Twenty-first of July.
All right, thank you.
Give some of us who like to travel a chance to travel.
Yeah. Now you can travel with a laptop.
Yeah, you noticed my background's a little different than normal.
I'm noticing that fish.
Yeah.
That's pretty nice.
Yeah, it's, it's a muskie that came out of the lakes up here.
Good.
Very nice.
All right, everybody. Well, have a, have a good week, month, whatever it is, until we talk again. Thank you.